All right. Good evening, Mount Vernon. Today is November 12th, 2025, and this is our Regular City Council meeting. We are going to do some general housekeeping for those in-house. There are two exits here, one in front of the pews on the right-hand side, the double doors. You can take that out. Straight ahead, there'll be a main staircase on the right-hand side that'll take you down to the ground level. Additionally, there's an exit in the back. And there is a staircase to the right of that exit, and it will take you down to the ground level as well. If you have a cellphone, please mute your cellphone or put it on vibrate. If you need to take a call, please step out into the hallway to do so. If you need to communicate with someone inside the chambers, please make sure that you take that conversation outside as well, because we can hear everything up here. We have a presentation today before we're going to get into the public speakers. But before we do that, I would like to do the Pledge of Allegiance and have it done by Councilwoman Boxell.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, so we have Deputy Commissioner Lackard here. And she's doing a presentation on police reform. So DC Lackard, when you get a chance, can you come up to the mic? Make sure it's on. You'll see the red light if it's on.
Yes. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Thank you for having me. I am Deputy Commissioner Jennifer Lackard, and I bring greetings this evening from our Acting Commissioner Marcel J. Oliver. So thank you for having us. This evening, I would like to do a review of our police reform. The Police Reform Commission was created in 2020 in the wake of the George Floyd tragic murder in Minneapolis. As a result of Governor Cuomo Executive Order 181, there was a requirement that municipalities in the state of New York create a reform plan that included feedback from the community and also look to make actual changes with how police engage with the community. In 2021, a committee of about 20 or some odd individuals were a part of that commission. We met regularly to talk about what the challenges were in the city. And there was a series of 43 recommendations that was created in order to move us forward. My position is Deputy Commissioner for the Police Department, but specifically over wellness and police reform. So I would like to say that by virtue of my daily attendance at work, there is reform happening every day within a city department. A lot of it is based on a QA-QI method, quality assurance. We identify a problem. We work together to find solutions. So I will go through, I can go through this report. I believe that the council has been presented with this report and have seen it. And I hope everyone has read it in its totality. I am prepared this evening to go through the questions. But I am also prepared to go through the items that have not been met or are ongoing. What that means is there are some recommendations of the 43 that have been met. We have accomplished those goals, and we have moved on. And we have figured out other ways to integrate it into our daily practice in the police department. There are some recommendations that have not been accomplished at all. Many have been attempted, but for a variety of reasons, they have not been completed. There are other recommendations that have been started, and then for a variety of reasons, we don't have the resources, or it's a work in progress. So I would like to offer up to the commission, to the council, how you would like for me to handle. Would you like me to go 1 through 43? Or would you like me to address the items that are still outstanding?
Outstanding for 300.
You got it. Thank you. So we'll go with number one. Number one's outstanding, and it is a partially met, ongoing recommendation. This recommends that this department develop a mission statement, vision statement, and a set of core values for the department. Recommend that it's a collaborative effort involving the members of the service, and also recommends that these statements be available on a public-facing website. This recommendation is ongoing because while we did work within command staff to meet several times to develop unit and department mission statements and value statements, what we had not done was push it back out to our department, to the members of service. So where we are right now is that we are taking the feedback that we receive from our command staff. We actually also have what's called an internal QA-QI committee, and that is a member of each department and unit within the department that we meet. And we talk about random issues, whatever is on the table. What was on our most recent topic was this particular statement. We have a list of questions that we are going to put out in a survey and push out to the entire department. We hope to have that done by the middle of November, so that we, pardon me, the middle of December, so that we can get our feedback back from the rest of the department. So they will rank it as in a survey, and then say they like this question, that we should be more, we should be community-oriented. And they can kind of select and then rank what they want and what they think we as a department embody. That will then get presented back to the commissioner, myself, and the deputy chiefs. And then we will make a decision on what the final mission, vision, and core value of the department will be. So that is why that is an ongoing issue, but we hope that we'll be able to present in the 2026 that that is a completed recommendation. Are there any questions about that, that particular one? The next one that we have that's ongoing is the number two. The police department recommends, the commission recommends that the police department continue to collect data around incidents involving use of force and making the data available online for public access. We, we sort of, this actually could be considered complete, but it's, it's not. We are working on several platforms to make the data available. Use of force is something that we present every day. We look at use of force. It's presented. We have an officer that looks and classifies and reviews use of force incidents that may have happened the day before. That data is then collected and reported up to State DCJS, and then that is also put out in a report. We were relying on DCJS to have a report, and we were just linking from our city website to the state website until we realized that they were not compiling that statewide report anymore. So if someone were to go to the website to look, the data is not accurate. It's not updated. It's very old. I believe it goes back to 2021 when we initially started doing this. So what we've done, which is actually an opportunity, we now have a new records management system, so with Tyler. So there's a beautiful system of data that we can now get. We just have to figure out how to get all of that out. We are working with some good use of force reports that'll be able to calculate and give us data on how many use of force reports did we have? How many individuals were involved? What's the demographic of the individuals who were impacted by the use of force? What's the demographic of the officer who was involved in the use of force? How many officers are still involved in use of force on a regular basis? So that kind of very granular data is what we're looking to create and put out in our reports. We're about 50% on the way in making that available. So we again hope that in the 2026 update, this information will be available for public access. Any questions on that? All right, we're on to number three. Number three, the committee recommended that the Mount Vernon Police Department improve data collection by including at least one annual community survey that collects data from a variety of community resources. This was, this is ongoing. This will always be ongoing because it's never met. Every year, we're supposed to put out a survey. We did put one out in 2022. We had partnered with kindness.org, who had actually funded the distribution of the survey to the community. And that, the results of that is in the appendix of this, the report that you have. Any questions about that? Moving forward to page four, question nine. The committee recommends that the city of Mount Vernon establish a civilian complaint review board to review and substantiate civilian complaints. This has been a pressing topic that's of interest to many on this committee and the city. And we are still going back on the feasibility of doing a CCRB. We've looked at the numbers. There's sort of a data set. I believe it's 1% for your total police budget that you would have to allocate towards a CCRB if you were to create that. With us looking at a $25 million budget, we'd be looking at maybe $350,000 that we would have to commit to having a CCRB. I think that is something that's not realistic, given the fact that we average about 45 civilian complaints per year. And of those 45, many of those are about disrespectful tone and tenor with the community. And we feel like that's something that we could try to address internally with training. We're working with our HR, Human Resource Department, to train our officers and do more customer service-related trainings. We are also looking at partnering with some of our conflict resolution partners to help us identify opportunities to resolve conflict with people in the community in a non-arbitrating way that allows us to actually just say, hey, I don't like the way you talk to me. What does that look like? And we are looking at other ways to do that, that we think will not require a $250,000 commitment. But that conversation is ongoing, and we're happy to explore it. But unless the council wants to provide us with that nice check, I think we're happy to look at other alternatives to meet the same objectives of making people feel comfortable that we are seriously looking at their concerns and we're vested in their satisfaction with our quality of services.
Can I ask a question on that? I mean, since the civilian complaint review board might be cost prohibitive in this next upcoming budget, what's the current process? Like, number seven, the complaint process. So how does it work now? And you guys said you're going to suggest improvements. What were the improvements to the already process that we have for just a regular civilian complaint? How does it work?
Right. So residents still can go on to the PD website, and actually, there's a box on there. There's a button that you can click to either file, commend an employee, or file a civilian complaint. You could do that directly on the website, and that's done privately and can be done anonymously. Going back five years, when I came into the role, there was a lot of community pushback because at one point, they were logging civilian complaints. So someone would have to provide their ID in order to get an actual civilian complaint form. There was pushback that people didn't feel comfortable doing that. And so we changed that process immediately. So now what we have is accessibility, that people can go places. We've limited to where they can. You can go to the police department. You should be able to go to the clerk office, go to the public library, and receive the actual blank copy of the form to complete. That's then submitted. It is then given to, they'll look at who the officer is involved. That will then go to that individual's commanding officer for an investigation to start. It gets logged, and then it goes through the entire chain in terms of investigating, getting reports, moving it up to the top, where the commissioner actually makes the final decision on what the disposition is.
And yeah, I mean, that's helpful. So what about like something specific, like you just mentioned, like you said 90% of the complaints are just like tone? What if there's a complaint about somebody's tone, officer spoke to someone who, you know, maybe the tone could have been better, and it substantiated. You went and investigated, however you investigated, you found that maybe it was true. What happens to that officer? What happens to that? You know, what kind of action is taken in that case?
Oh, yes. So when there are substantiated complaints, that goes through the normal disciplinary process. So there could be some discipline based on where that fits in our discipline matrix. So it could be as short, it could be as small as a verbal, or it could be as more as them getting dates taken away from them for disciplinary action.
That was it. Thanks.
Yes, you're welcome. Any other questions?
Let's have one quick question. Is there some sort of restorative justice or conflict resolution that goes on during the year for each officer?
So that is a long, it's on my bucket list of things to do. When we started the youth court, many of you are aware of the peer diversion youth court that we start, that I started a couple of years ago here. A lot of the partners that are partners with us in the community that helped us to actually create that court. It's a, it's a court that has the criminal, like the entire legal process, but we added a restorative justice component to it. So when there is conflict, when we have issues of conflict at schools or other things, we bring in those partners to help us. They're trained arbitrators, mediators. They know how to mediate. They go through the official process. There's like a best practice of how that's done. We don't mess with that. We just bring them in and ask them to help us, you know, mediate, whatever that might be. I'm looking to expand that, but then I also know that, you know, people have done this stuff for us just based on ones and twos, small numbers. If we were going to make it larger, we'd have to figure out how we can, you know, whether we go for a grant or what that looks like to make it work for them. But this is definitely something that we can expand on a model that we already had, which was the youth court. Any other questions? Okay. 10 is submitting on an annual basis a report, which is this report today, which I can have to thank Councilwoman Gleason for staying on me, for making sure that this report is done. It is something, this is, as you noticed, 2023 to 2025 report, which means that it was not completed on an annual basis. It is something that I have, I'm bringing in an intern. I have a college intern that's coming in that will be focused solely on police reform. So the goal is that some of these items that are outstanding, they can help me kind of move forward with moving that along. And then for, for many students, this is the work that we're doing is very interesting to them. So I do have an intern who's starting December 1st that will help move a lot of these items forward. So there will be a report in 2026.
DC Lackard, the only thing I would say, because this is going to become a part of the record, that we just have to change the date to November 12.
Yes.
That's in there.
Yes, we'll do. Next one up, that's unaddressed, is number 13, requiring all 911 dispatchers to be trained in handling behavioral health crisis. We do agree, I actually just was having a conversation with county this morning. There is a training that's next week. I will be participating in their training to see, because we have the wellness precinct, which actually is unlike any other district in Westchester County, actually in the state, and how police deal with behavioral health calls. I am going to participate in their training, and then we're going to create one that's very specific for Mount Vernon. The typical model is that when there's a crisis, they will call sort of the 988, the crisis number that goes through county, then it's dispatched. We are fortunate enough to have a mobile crisis that's attached to Mount Vernon. We also have officers that respond to people that are in crisis. And so the call that would go from any other police department would direct them to certain places. We have additional resources where we would direct people. So we're creating a very specific training, but it will be with the support of county and their existing resources. Any questions about that?
I actually want to expand on that slightly. So in my view, my opinion.
Councilwoman Gleason, can you bring the mic closer to you, please?
I'm sorry?
Can you bring the mic closer to you?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Okay. For me, a part of police reform is also a part of, you know, training, like you have here. What ongoing training do the dispatchers get when it comes to customer service? And the reason why I say that, and maybe customer service is not actually the right terminology, but I've been getting a lot of complaints on how dispatchers are handling phone calls and how they're speaking to the public, which is disheartening because, you know, we're here to serve the public, right? So is there any training involved, or will there be future training with them? And should we be encouraging the public to go on the website and make a complaint?
Absolutely.
And document their time of call and stuff?
Absolutely. So to answer the first question, we are working with our human resources, our deputy commissioner, who's actually putting together a training, a customer service-related training, that's specifically for our dispatchers. That coupled with what I'm working with with county will provide the support and actually probably an entire protocol for our dispatchers. That's a high turnover role. So whatever we do, it'd be great to create a protocol that as they get onboarded, they also get this training that goes along with it. So that training for customer service, we hope to get that up and running soon. But that's being spearheaded out of our HR department. I can assist with the behavioral health-specific calls, but I also can help on the reform side. So I get those same requests and concerns, and many people reach out to me directly. I am very specific. When did the call come in? What's the time? And I actually have our Support Services Division pull the call. I listen to the call. I hear what's going on. I then meet with my command staff and my commissioner, and then we have talks about what that looks like. So it, there's no complaint that goes unaddressed when it comes to me. That doesn't mean it only has to come to me. The process should be that they are able to file a complaint online. Those complaints, I also am on the distribution list. But they should be able to go online and file a complaint and say, on this day and this time, I had a, you know, unfortunate experience. This person was rude to me, and we can go back. And if they give some details about the call, we can actually hear it and turn that into a quality, an opportunity for quality assurance.
Is there a specific protocol that the officers have when they answer the phone and dispatch?
They are supposed to answer the phone, identify themselves as the Mount Vernon Police Department, and their shield number.
Shield number, right. Okay. I think it'd be helpful and beneficial if it was, I don't know if it's posted on their desk or posted.
I'm sorry.
No, because, you know, that's what we do.
I'm having a hard time hearing you up here to air this far.
No problem.
I know it sounds funny, but you know, if we have it posted by the phone or on the desk where they actually dispatch, it's helpful. So when they enter the phone, they can actually read verbatim what they're supposed to say. And so it's just a sentence, you know. So I think that'll be helpful.
You know, I don't, I like to say I don't want to be petty, but that's how things get done, you know? So if it's as simple, and I do it myself, you know, it's, it could be in the middle of the night, 2:00 in the morning, I'll call the front desk, and I'll call, and if I don't hear that, I'm like, who is this? You know, and of course, if it's, oh, hey, how are you? No, always. It's your name, your shield number. You always have to identify yourself. I feel, I have not caught that many, but I would like to know those that are not doing it. The only way that I know that is if people are filing a complaint or actually making us aware of what that is. You can say you're snitching, or you're being petty, but at the end of the day, that's the only way we can make work towards some kind of progress. So please, you know, we'll say file a complaint. I don't want it to be considered filing a full civilian complaint. But yeah, you know, just actually say this happened, and we'll definitely look into it and get back to them. Yep. Any other questions? We're on to number 21. The commission recommended that the police department develop a formal policy and procedure around managing large protests and events. This has been a topic that we do stuff around field force operations. And it's, that's kind of like just part of like, from the academy, that's what that's called when you're large, when you're handling large events. We have not written a policy to that point. I think there's a lot that goes into that, and we, that's sort of illegal. We need to talk to legal about what our concerns are. I can say, though, that we definitely do need to do something. From a young minor's, from a wellness perspective, what we do see are some of these protests that are happening that have like an actual agenda. No Kings, Black Lives Matter, you know, climate change. A lot of the radicalism that we see with some of the violence in the communities do start with a legitimate, a legitimate protest. And then from that, there's kind of this radicalism that's happening, and these young people are really kind of getting turned on because they are committed to whatever that is. And I think we need to think outside the box on what we're creating policies and what we're looking for, and that it's not just about keeping people and managing the protests, but it's also being mindful of what we see and just kind of being alert with what's happening in our community and what threats that are there. Because as someone who deals and responds to crisis at the schools, aware of things that are maybe more confidential, they haven't gotten big enough yet to be a concern. We do have, as in the Bronx, and Yonkers, and New Rochelle, it's not just Mount Vernon. We definitely have unrest that's happening in our communities, and we should just be mindful of that. So that's a work in progress, but that's definitely something that can't happen without our partnership with legal. So we hope to have more updated in 2026. And this is a priority for us. Yes.
Question, even beyond the protests that we would worry about, what's concerning is that there's also no policy for large events in the city, right? Which would fall in the same category. Do we know what's happening in neighboring cities? For example, does Yonkers have training around this? And if they do, can we just copy and mimic what the other, you know, other cities around us are doing?
In theory, we could. We could look to see what they have. You know, Mount Vernon has a very unique dynamic. But yes, we can definitely look at that. We definitely, when I started here five years ago, didn't have a memorial field. And so we have had large events that were there. How police responded is just basic police protocol, right? So there's no policy to say this is what we would do. There is sort of a chain in how officers would respond in a crisis, or just kind of in their basic operations, which is what they do. So that's also the piece of when they, when we saw this, it was sort of like, well, how would we do something different than what we do? And I think it's the broader conversation of what are the other social impacts of having a large event? What threats exist? How can we protect our community? How are we notifying other individuals around us when there is, let's say, something? You know, it could be something as simple as a lockdown drill. That's not even a lockdown drill, but actual lockdown or a serious active threat at a school, then maybe there's protests. You know, this can go in so many different directions. And so how do we create a policy that speaks to all of that is where we can kind of get stuck. That doesn't mean we don't do it. It just means we have to really sit down and, you know, committed to creating a policy that makes sense. Okay, thank you. Number 22, the commission recommends the department develop a formal policy that covers interactions with undocumented residents in the Mount Vernon community. This has been something that we have been working on. In wellness, we have eight priority populations that we respond to. Many people know them, mental health, individuals dealing with substance use, homeless, reentry, people coming home from prison or formerly incarcerated, veterans, older adults, challenged youth, domestic violence. I think I just mentioned everyone. Out of those eight populations, autism, people who were developmentally disabled are not a part of that, nor are people with immigrant status. We have found that immigrant status is a challenge in our community, and we are trying to pull resources together. Obviously Sanctuary State, you know, things that we're doing here in New York. There is no policy that does that because we, it's one melting pot. We don't look at and treat and deal with people from the police department based on their immigrant status. They get the same supports. It's just who we're routing them to and what organizations are able to assist. And that's what's done from the wellness side of it. We do not call ICE when we come in contact. We've had some pretty serious situations. Even today, we're dealing with someone who doesn't have immigrant status. There does create some safety concerns when they are out committing crimes, and they do not have legal status here in the states. But we, as a police department, have to navigate that. And as new laws come out, we have to reframe that policy. So we probably need to get additional counseling and consultation on how we can share what our concerns are so that we can develop a policy. There's concerns around that, and we need to make sure we're all on the same page to how we protect the community. Yep. The other one is around procedural justice. I mean, the procedural justice is something that, of course, it's a, I like to say it's like wellness now. It's a, it's a word that everyone uses, but they really don't know what that means. And that's about accountability. It's about being transparent. It's also about being mindful that people don't need to know everything, but they need to know enough to know how did this event happen? And how do we move forward? We're working with our training units to do that. We're also looking to see how we can roll out other opportunities to communicate what happens in police on a daily day basis in a way that, number one, protects people's privacy, but at the same time, really educates the community about what it is to be, to respond to the penal law in a community and what that might look like for people. And procedural justice, I think it's really important for people to know what that means. and we have an opportunity to define what that looks like here in Mount Vernon. Any questions?
I have one question.
Yes.
One question. Uh, when it comes to, I, I see that in the report, you said that there, and what you said just now is that when, um, the recruits are coming out of the academy, they're, they're being taught this. Is there any way to use the plugin days that when the next class comes out, that we could take that same amount of, uh, more senior officers that have not been trained in that and maybe use the plugin day, uh, to, to, to continue the expansion of that training?
So our training modules, the five training sessions that we have per year are based on a ten day cycle. In order to train every police officer in the department, it's a ten day window. Our plugin days, we have what, five per year? And those are, you know, they're not the same. Your officers are assigned or given, they have to meet that plugin day, but you don't have everyone in the department obligated to complete that ten day cycle. Does that make sense, right? So to do that would be a little challenging. We can do things like roll call trainings, flash trainings where we're doing them. I just had a conversation this morning with the lieutenant, uh, where there was a topic, this particular lieutenant is a subject matter expert on crime scene investigations. And he did something the other day and I was like, oh, well, if we do something, can, what if we just made you, like, we kind of made sure you did the training and that we made it available? Do you think officers would show up for free just to get that content and that base? And the officers that were there were like, yeah, I would get that because that's, that's good stuff. So we have to start thinking outside of the box. How can we do, make training available? That doesn't mean it breaks the city because everyone has to do overtime. But it, it's something that, you know, it's based on people's interests. The, the five training sessions are a challenge. They're a challenge for me. I have to like fight to get wellness on there because there's so much content. We're trying to make sure every officer in the department is aware of. Um, we used, wellness used to be an eight hour day. Now we're down to four. We're a half day segment and I'm like splicing it up. I get people from all across to come down and be a part of that training. And those partners come for ten days to train our officers. So it's a huge commitment. And usually we have firearms, wellness, you know, use of force. There's so many topics that they have. Those ten day, those five training sessions are highly coveted. Um, but it does not mean that we can't get creative about other ways that we can train. Okay. Um, twenty-four. Uh, good faith effort to increase the salary and benefits of department. You know, that's an ongoing question. We had an MOU that increased their salaries up to two years ago. So we're still now behind with, um, so that's an ongoing conversation that's being led by our PBA and, um, our commissioner and our mayor. Uh, but those conversations continue and I can't say it's not a priority. Retention is important and we understand that that's an issue. So that is a high priority for us. Twenty-five, department increased awareness about upcoming police exams. Um, we continue to do that. Um, I don't want to give the exact number, but I want to say, um, we had a fraction of individuals that just took our last police exam. So you have how many people are interested in applying? Then how many people are able to take the exam and pass? And then how many individuals pass the physical agility? And it keeps going down, down, down to the point that, you know, you have a very small number of individuals. And let's say you have a number like a hundred of maybe five hundred people that took a test. Then now you have the residents and then the non-resident list. Sometimes out of that hundred, twenty of them are residents and eighty of them are not residents. So it just depends on what we get. We continue to try to use our citizens' police academy as a, a, a opportunity to get new people in. They get to see the department. There's no questions about what it is, no surprises. We use other engagement with us, with wellness, just to meet new people and bring them in. Uh, our youth networks, our peer youth court and other youth opportunities that we do, bring in individuals that are young that want to apply to the department. But, uh, you know, a lot of people don't want to be police today. And so it is a challenge and we need to be realistic about what that looks like and then try to deploy our resources in a way that allows us to protect the city, but also mindful of the current status of where we are in policing today. Any questions?
Yeah. Are we, um, any engagement with like, uh, the, the school district or maybe like, uh, fairs and, um, you know, career days and stuff like that? So just an opportunity to see what, you know, police do and, you know, the salaries that they make and as an, you know, an option.
Uh, I feel like this, the school district, they have a regular line, a direct line to me. And principals from all the schools call me, the new superintendent. We're establishing a good relationship on what that looks like. There are always opportunities and I make myself available, my team and the department. Um, our patrol commander, Lieutenant Terry, also does the same. So we are open to any opportunity where we can collaborate with the, with the school district in a way that does not, um, deplete our current resources. So yeah, we're definitely there. We do high school events, we do civic, I know wellness, we have a whole civic engagement component that we can go out and go do things in a school. Uh, we do things around behavioral health and state of mind. Domestic violence has been something we've done, not just because October is domestic violence month, but we do have a lot of young people who see, experience domestic violence and, um, sometimes become our perpetrators. Some of our young people are perpetrators. And so the best workaround that is prevention and education. And so we're doing a lot in a lot of different spaces with the school district, but you could always say it's never enough. Yeah. But we make ourselves available when they give us a call and they ask for something. We figure out a way to, to support them. Um, but regarding, um, fairs, we always are onsite. We do all of our, a lot of our promotions at the schools, with the high schools, obviously, and the graduating seniors that are eligible, for sure, we do. Any other questions? Um, same thing, number twenty-six about recruiting and hiring more police department, uh, more Mount Vernon residents to police department. I feel like I've answered that question. That is an ongoing challenge. We continue to find creative ways to bring people in. A lot of it is around personal engagement, relationships. People know us, they've done something with us and they decide this is something that they want to do. We just don't find people saying this is what I want to do unless there's some familiar family experience or personal experience that draws them to it. Uh, twenty-seven recommends police officers, their benefits are enhanced. Again, a lot of that is, um, tied to funding, but the connection to local colleges is definitely an opportunity. Uh, as I said, we have interns that are coming from Monroe College. We're working with Iona. We have Westchester Community College. So many of those programs are available. Uh, the former police commissioner had a relationship with, uh, one or two other organizations and colleges that we're looking to further that to see about tuition reimbursement. Excuse me? And that ties into the intellectual wellness component, kind of making our officers happy, keep their brain going, keeping them thriving, looking to develop themselves, um, preparing for promotion opportunities within the department. So yes, um, these are ongoing things that we're looking to do. And again, looking to do them without having a, a dollar figure attached to it. Any questions? Uh, twenty-eight is around tours, which again, a lot of that is funding and negotiating with our contract. Twenty-nine continues, uh, the MVPD well, that's wellness. Wellness is, um, I would like to, with the permission of the council, come and present more of our wellness work and what we're doing. We have some astounding data and outcomes on how we're impacting people's lives on the wellness front. I think the community needs to understand that the wellness precinct and our wellness division responds to police service calls, um, that we are not primarily a city entity that does wellness. And I think that also is a bit confusing that people think we're just available. What we are is that when we get a call and it's someone that's in crisis with themselves, um, or they're a repeat, uh, a family that's in repeat crisis, wellness then dispatches our mobile crisis. We have a domestic violence advocate that's now attached to us through Hope Store. We have a homeless outreach person through Choice. We also have, um, a crime victims advocate through WJCS. All of these individuals work side by side with law enforcement at the wellness precinct for us to be able to respond to people in crisis. So, um, that's a model that we continue to develop. I'd love to be able to come back before the council to present where we are with some of the things we've been doing. We, we're celebrating our third year coming up in twenty-six. So we think it's good for us to be able to share where we are. Any questions so far? Okay. Um, diversity goals are continuing to be a priority for us. Uh, junior police officers are working with the DB to, uh, I'm on number thirty-two. Um, we're working with the, I am working with the detective bureau, the commander, Lieutenant McKenna, to create kind of the KSA's, the knowledge, skills and abilities that we're looking for, for a detective. What does that look like? What is it that we want you to have before you get in this role so that it better informs you and it, it makes you a better detective? Um, so that's ongoing in terms of what that looks like. There was questions around in the past with number three, that there was a police exam. Um, it was a prep course. Uh, our training unit continues to do that. In the past, the guardians was, um, helping with those training sessions. They no longer do that. Um, and so we just need to kind of think outside the box on what that looks like. And psychological assessments, we need to find a new, um, way of screening our candidates to make sure that they meet the mental capacity of what it takes to be a police officer in the city of Mount Vernon. And I believe we are at the end.
DC Lacard?
Yes.
I have a quick question for you. So, um, the county corrections has kind of moved away from taking, uh, tests. Is that what MVPD is doing now?
No.
Okay.
You mean a test to qualify?
Yeah, a test to qualify. I know corrections is just doing like, um, I think it's like an online questionnaire.
Yeah, they've also increased their age. They've also increased their age of who's eligible. So yeah, they, they broaden their eligibility.
Yeah, I thought there was no age limit for corrections.
No, mm-hmm.
But, um, so Mount Vernon, we're still going to continue to do the tests and stuff like?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other questions for me?
I, I have a quick one. Um, you, well, I don't want to put you in a spot, but you mentioned that, um, people don't really want to be police officers anymore. I mean, do you have any guess as to why, um, that is? Why is that happening, you feel?
Well, yeah, that's putting me on the spot, but, um, I just think the climate that we currently live in.
Yeah.
Um, it's different. You know, it's, it's a different climate. Uh, the community sometimes has an antagonistic relationship with law enforcement. Even if they themselves haven't had it, I think kind of the, the, what you see on social media are these instances of maybe brutality or excessive force. And there's just this general feeling about not liking law enforcement.
Right.
Forget if you've had your own personal experience. I think that's just where we are in Mount Vernon, where you do the most work and we are the lowest paid. I think that's also a challenge. Um, but I think some of the best cops in the state come out of Mount Vernon. When you see some of the work that's being done in other jurisdictions, they're most likely a Mount Vernon cop that went someplace else. So, you know, when people see that, that encourages people to want to be law enforcement, but a lot of that is through personal engagement. They know someone, they've come in, they've sat through the citizens' police academy for ten weeks. They've come to events, they've been engaged with us, they volunteered with us, they interned with us. Like they know what it is and who we are. And that's the driving force for why they want to become a member of the department. I just don't think that, given what's happening in this, in the socio-economic political space, that there's just a lot of interest in people wanting to be police.